You are watching XS Laporte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the June 5th, 2024 meeting of Laporte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportcounty.org.
Settle down, class. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Laporte County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, June 5th, 10 o'clock. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing afterwards for a moment of silence. Tomorrow is the 80th anniversary of D-Day. I'd like to pay homage to the 4,500 allied forces who died on that day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, with which you stand as a nation under God, beautiful, liberty, and justice for all.
Anybody who's been under fire in defense of their country, that had to be a horrific event. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Present.
All three are present.
Thank you. For the agenda, I've been given a couple of things we need to add here. Consider permission to approach the council with fleet information from Enterprise. Consider permission to travel to Denver, August 26, 28, for annual conference. Mike Schultz, plus one. And consider permission to approach council for restroom ceiling repairs at Community Corrections. Cheryl Listensky, Director of Facilities. I would entertain a motion to accept that on the agenda.
I would make a friendly amendment to that to also add, consider a cover sheet signing for Bridge 97 rehab plans. Jay Sullivan, County Engineer.
That was not brought to us prior to this meeting, so I will second that.
Madam President.
Yes.
Hi. I hope you feel better, Madam President. This was brought to us by Jay Sullivan. This seems to be the customary face sheet for the plans for this type of bridge work. I also consulted with also Matt Reardon, and he confirmed same. So I just want you to know legally, I'm okay with it.
Do we have a time constraint on that? There a time constraint on that? We need to do it today?
No, no, we don't have to do it today, but I'm prepared to go forward if not understood.
It's a pleasure, Commissioners.
Um, let's just, let's just review it for the next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to check to look at it myself.
This way we can review it as well.
Okay. So as amended with the first three, do we have a motion to accept that? Yep.
I have a motion on the floor.
Yep. Second amendment, the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Consider approval of the May 15th, 2024 minutes.
Motion to accept.
Not doing that either?
Yep.
Taking the day off. I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye. Consideration of claims.
Commissioners, presuming you want payroll and operating expense claims separately, we'll do it that way. Payroll for the period ending 5/17/2024 is in the amount of $1,502,913 and for the period 5/31/24, it's $1,487,942.69. Motion approved payroll as presented.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Oh, you know what? Timeout. Then somebody is on Zoom, we should be doing roll call. Can we do roll call for the payroll?
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Three ayes. And then we have operating expense claims in the amount of $3,343,772.71.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion and seconded all.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you very much. We are at the most exciting part of the meeting for public comment. Anyone who would like to speak, say your name and address and spill your guts.
Good morning, gentlemen and lady. My name is Stephen Nightengale. My address is 998 East, 1000 North, Laporte, 46350. And I will be brief. I rise to publicly thank you all and former Commissioner Mathias for your support of Mr. Friedman's efforts to enforce the stop work order that Commissioner Mathias issued on April 4th, 2022. I also wish to publicly thank Mr. Friedman for his efforts on your behalf and mine and all other residents of Laporte County who feel similarly about Judge Steele's May 23rd, 2024 verdict and who feel similarly that the verdict is in no way whatever a negative reflection of how Mr. Friedman pursued this matter. Unfortunately, Judge Steele's order means that anyone can do exactly what Mr. Versaw has been doing since December 6, 2021 on any property in Laporte County regardless of how it is zoned as long as they obtain an MS4 permit. However, the permit is titled or the permitted activity is described as long as Laporte County MS4 Coordinator deems the application to be quote sufficient unquote. Judge Steele's order also means that anyone can do anything else they want, whatever they wish to call it, quote excavating unquote, or anything else as long as if the total land disturbance is over one acre, their MS4 permit is deemed to be quote sufficient unquote by the Laporte County MS4 Coordinator. As a result, Judge Steele's order effectively negates any and all zoning ordinances in Laporte County that regulate any activity on a land area greater than one acre. There are courts in this country whose jurisdiction supersedes the jurisdiction of the Laporte County Superior Court. I and all those who appreciate this fact sincerely now hope for more favorable rulings from them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning. Steve Hallfield, 678-2E, 100 South, Mill Creek. First of all, I'd like to say I'm glad to see the county and the city working together on that expansion for the Park Street up there. I'm a little nervous that this might lead to another section of annexation of Seaver's Road, so I think the people should be aware of that. And also, I'd like to extend an invitation to all county elected, department heads, everything. On July 20th of this summer in Fish Lake, Lions Paws for Support is having a fundraiser party function out there. It's to help the veterans with service dogs. They do a tremendous job out there. Emily Howard's been doing this for I think nine years. She does a great job. And Mr. Rosinsky, she has food gift cards available for veterans and she can't give them away fast enough. So if you want, I'll get you her information. You can talk to her because I know you're involved with the veterans. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
I own and operate Tazco ready mix in Westville. Under the circumstances right now with the construction going on outside my plant, the detour that the state has given me has resulted in 25 to 30% more cost on my product. I'm looking for some relief. I'm looking for some help from the county to be able to use the county roads will help me immensely.
I know we've talked about that. I've talked with Endot, I've talked with the Highway Department, talked with the sheriff. We've got to come up with a better solution. It's impacting our local businesses. It's impacting our local roads. Endot has not been very helpful. I'll tell you that. I would tell them that they have not been very helpful with this, but it's a bad situation all the way around.
I understand that, but I mean, this is a busy time of the year for me.
I agree.
It's going to last another two to three months. I need some type of, some type of help.
I will make it a point to sit down with the Highway and see what else we can do. I'll let you know when we do that. I still got your phone number.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry for inconvenience. Anyone else for public comment?
George Callis, torn out of drive, Laporte. Call me crazy, call me stupid, call me petty, I don't care, but I think every, every year I believe Mr. Schultz sends out tax breaks or tax paperwork, right? Takes money to do these tax papers, right? Takes a dime for the envelope, a dime for the paper, a buck, $10 labor for each one. Well, I think all these, it's all started when I started looking at a nonprofit that gets all these, they don't pay nothing. So I believe the Commissioners should set a fee for all nonprofits to charge for every parcel. I don't know what the fee should be. I, you know, $50, $50 a parcel, $100 a parcel, whatever, but they can't get away with just nothing because this one company has, I don't remember the exact figures, don't hold me to it, has 25 properties, 25 parcels. They pay zero, zero, and seven of those parcels are just, are slum, slums. I mean, they got to cut the grass and that's all they got to do. They should develop them, they got to do something with them. So I think, I'm not asking for a tax, I'm asking for a fee, a fee to go wherever you guys decided to go, go to the shelters, go wherever you want to use, but every nonprofit should pay something. Laporte Hospital pays what? $20,000 a year? Franciscan pays zero, they're a nonprofit. YMCA, zero nonprofit. And I know they all give back, but all the churches give back, I understand that, but you can't get nothing. You have to, I'll use our church for example, we had a fire. Fire department came, we paid nothing. I set the alarm off by accident. The sheriff came, we paid nothing. We got to pay something and I don't need by every incident, just a lump sum figure once a year, 100 bucks, 200, just to make it enough where he can pay for the paper and his labor and everything to put it out. Okay? Did I make anything clear? But don't tell me it can't be done. Wait until the next meeting when you say it can't be done, but not today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your information. We'll have a, I guarantee you we'll have a discussion about that very.
You guarantee?
I guarantee it.
Oh, okay, if you say so.
Anyone else for public comment? Anybody on Zoom for public comment? Anybody there, Ting? Doesn't look like it. Nobody else for public comment? Public comment will be closed. We'll move on to department heads. Any department heads have anything they'd like to tell me? Seeing none? Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt Ridden from the Office of Community and Economic Development, Government Affairs, just letting you know, we're going to have the golden spike moment. I know that the Commissioners today, the Commissioners that are elected today, some previous Commissioners, there's a lot of different people that have been, had a hand in this till, over the years regarding figuring out how to get estate funding to get this connected. It means that we have, we'll have two different class ones, which are just big, big railroads that have access to this property, which is zoned for M2 heavy industrial, which is where people want to see growth and development. There'll be an event on the 18th. We're going to try and get that group together and celebrate a little bit. I think it's always good to celebrate a win when you get it, and I'm looking forward to that. That's all that I have. The event will be at 2:00 at JBC Rail, so.
All my notes from when I gave the address in 2012.
2012, that's all.
Yeah, that's all. I thought it was longer than that. Well, that was just when we did the groundbreaking.
The groundbreaking.
And I noticed that some of the people that we, that we honored there for that are no longer with us. But for that event, it just came to my mind, we should make sure we invite the rail committee.
Yes, they've taken care of, they're on the list, so it'll be, like I said, there's a lot of people over the years who worked hard. It was this group that got it done and closed, so that's good. And you know, now we're going to continue to work with property owners, so.
And the Colonel, Colonel Klangerman.
Sure, absolutely.
He was a good, good soul on that.
Well, we're looking forward to it, and as I said, it's, it's nice to celebrate the win, so thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Good morning. Amanda Laner's Health Department. I have two announcements. First is that this year we will be participating in HIV National Awareness Day, June 27th. We'll be partnering with Walgreens, will be set up at Franklin Street, Walgreens, 1816 Franklin Street, providing free HIV test and syphilis tests. Within the last, since 2018, there has been a 2,300% increase in congenital syphilis in the state of Indiana. So getting tested early is very, very important. With that saying said, we're also partnering with the Period Health. They will be providing gift cards for the first 20 people to be tested that day, gift cards to Walgreens. Secondly, we are finally moving back to Laporte. We will be back on the fourth floor this month. Currently, our offices are divided up in Michigan City between the courthouse and over on 8th Street. To be able to prepare for tests for moving day, we will be, the last day we will be open at 302 West 8th Street will be June 17th. And the 18th, we will be packing and moving back, and our first day open will be June 24th, back on the fourth floor. So it will be a day short of 18 months, so be happy to be back.
I know you're happy about that.
Very much happy.
We all are.
Yes. It's going to take a minute still for our laboratory, water laboratory to get recertified as well as our clinics, but as soon as we have those dates, we'll, we'll let you know.
Well, it looks beautiful up there.
It is, it's very nice.
Be very nice.
Very nice, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda.
I'd like, I'd like to say, Amanda, I'd like to say thank you to you because you know what, throughout this entire project, the Health Department and the Plan Commission has really put their hand in and really helped us out in getting that building together. The fifth floor is open now, prosecutors and Plan Commission are in there, and Amanda really had a big hand in that and helping us out and doing the day-to-day planning, so thank you. On top of running your own department, and your department is really a big department, and you've done a great job at your own department, just giving a lending hand and helping us out. I can't even tell you how much we appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner, but I'm very much looking forward to being able to take off a hat or two, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Any other department heads on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. No other department heads to report? Department heads, comment is closed. Move on to requests. Consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriation for the city of Laporte. Did you want to talk on that there, Mr. Mayor? I know how bashful you can be.
Good morning, Commissioners, and I know you have a busy schedule, so I will be brief to both of you, but I first got to tell you what. I love Laporte, I love our team. I mean, this is about housing. We've got great support from our team here. I see the county support here. I hope you recognize, and I believe all of you do, like I do, how fortunate we are to have the employees that we have here that care more about their job, more than about their jobs, but they care about the community because all of them could go make twice, three times the amount in the private sector, but they stay here to make our community, our city, and county better. So as well, I heard Matt Reardon talk about the golden spike. Obviously, you've heard Bert Cook talk about Microsoft. I'm going to tell you, we have two, what I'll call, experts. Matt Reardon, Bert Cook. I dare anybody that wants to get involved in economic development and try to improve communities and all that they go through to make things happen. And we're excited for the golden spike because as we talk about this partnership and what we've said since day one, what's good for the county is good for the city. What's good for the city is good for the county. So with that, housing, you've heard it all. Everybody agrees, we need more and more housing. Obviously, we had an opportunity with the developer from Rolling to bring him into Laporte the day after things didn't work out here in the county. We've heard the county say we want to partner. We'd love the Park Street property, the Mitch Ficus property, who's a local developer for years. Support them. What we're asking, I mean, you've given infrastructure support to other communities, $500,000, which would be 25% of the overall commitment. The city of Laporte, who's already, we've already funded many housing projects, we would cover the 75%. And this is just a great way to show partnership, and what I would ask is 500,000. The council has already approved that from the county, and I guess we did things somewhat in reverse. I assume there would not be an issue with supporting and using ARP funds, which is the number one issue for housing. You know, they always say we need more housing for all, and I would ask your support as the county council did, for $500,000 commitment for Park Street and the Mitch Ficus building.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I am curious, has the city of Laporte repealed its ordinance yet in regard to refusing to provide services to any county residents who have not been annexed into the city?
Have we?
Have you repealed that ordinance that refuses to provide any water or sewer services outside the city limits of Laporte?
We have not.
Do you have any plans to do that?
Because.
Do you have any plans to do that?
Because.
Well, because the, I hear what you're saying here today, and the vibrant community studies certainly shows that we desperately need housing all over Laporte County, everywhere. The issue though is, is that the city has for the past two years taken a very hard line against providing any services outside of city limits without annexation. And if, if the city wants to engage in good faith with the county, I believe they should be actually entering, willingly entering to a partnership. Partnership goes both ways. And, you know, we've had the recent annexation of 39 North where the city threatened to cut off water to all those residents out there if they didn't annex into the city. It seems to me that if, if the city wanted to engage in some good faith here today, they would be, they would be repealing that ordinance if they want to.
I'm not sure what this has to do with housing, but if, what I will tell you is.
What has to do with, Mr. Mayor, is that we have here in Laporte County, and we, we want to partner, partner with folks, right? So like in Michigan City, we partner them to it. Right. The issue is that we can't have, it's not appropriate for the city to come to us for ARP money for, for water and sewer infrastructure in the city when they're refusing to provide any of those services to anyone else in the county.
Well, actually, we are, which you're not paying any portion of, for all the improvements that you've ignored for years, and we're going to take that on. Also, if we talk about teamwork and partnership, how much do you pay us for our fire departments to come out on emergency calls every single day, eight to nine, that we partner with EMS, 911? How much do you pay the city for that?
How much does the city pay for the volunteer department?
If I could ask, I'm asking because we're doing this work for the county, how much do you pay in that?
The same amount the city, the volunteer department.
I'm sorry if this is a confusing situation for you. We also partnered with the county lit to make that, I think our sheriff's department has benefited more than we have. We treat wastewater, Rolling Prairies wastewater, we treat the island, we've partnered financially with the corridor, and then, and I don't know if this is just political on your part, but we transcribed your comments from a podcast you did at WLOI where all you talk about, because you were quick to announce the Microsoft deal when you knew that was under NDAs and no one was supposed to announce it, but I, and maybe this is political if it is, but you said, the Microsoft, we have executives coming in. In Laporte County, all their paycheck and taxes go here instead of splitting with Porter County and St. Joe County. I want my family to live here with me. We need housing of all types. We need water and sewer. I mean, I can read all of this, and I understand people say things politically to get elected, but this is something where, hey, $360,000 of homes need to be built so people can move up. And I'm fine with the pettiness. We are solving problems on 39 North. We are improving lives. Financially, a homeowner will pay less in their property taxes, in their water, and their sewer. And while you chose to ignore it, and this is fine because Vista Views on Pine Lake are important, and I know that's your top priority. Our top priority is housing in Laporte and making a difference for families. And I don't mean, Commissioner, President, without a second. I should have allowed you to second it before responding, but I feel the need. We're not going to get caught up in all this Mickey Mouse pettiness. We love the fact that housing is happening in Laporte County all over and especially in Laporte. And again, this is only a 25% ask. If you choose not, we'll do it on our own, but I think this is a great partnership.
I've made a motion to accept. I made a motion, so.
Do you want to second it?
No, I don't believe it's going to be fiscally responsible for the county.
I will second the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Nay.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Two to one.
Thank you.
Mayor, I want to thank you for the invite to your presentation the other night. Went to Commissioner Grammerosa myself. It was exhilarating, it really was. And you're right, you've got a great team. They all work together. I'm envious of that, because I don't always enjoy that, but the progress that you've made since you've been mayor is absolutely amazing. You leave a legacy, and I look forward to the opportunity to continue to work together. The golden spike thing is going to be pretty awesome. I've been working on it a long time, and sorry that you got caught up in this. 210 more days you won't have to put up with either one of us, so.
Well, I'll tell you, I just want to thank you two for thinking big, and Commissioner Haney, this is not personal, this is professional, we don't take it personal. I mean, we're still from the city park, going to work on those five trees that we're going to move for Vista View on Pine Lake as well, and that's a top priority, and we'll continue to dig holes for housing, and we're going to change lives, and Laporte is the place to be, so thank you all.
That's awesome. I would recommend reaching out to Kingsford Heights. They've got 70 houses under development, another 300 on the way. They haven't need to reach out to any money for the county for that. It would be fantastic for the city of Laporte to take some pointers for Kingsford Heights. It's a community everybody's moving to.
Under old business, next we have consider proposed settlement of the Board of Commissioners versus DNM litigation to allow sale of disputed parcel to unrelated entity or individual with injunction slash stop work orders remaining in place until sale closes. I'm sure we're all familiar with this situation. I'd like a motion to.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Attorney has looked this over, we're all good?
Yes.
I read it three times. I even understood some of it. Okay, you have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Need a roll call, it's not financial. Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to. All shots. Moving on to new business, consider property transfer ordinance, Amanda Laner's Health Department.
Property transfer ordinance, last year, everything was repealed with legislation with regards to septic systems, and this year, again with legislation, forbids mandated inspections at time of transfer for septic systems, so we've updated our property transfer ordinance to reflect that. So any mention of septic systems has been removed. Right now, it's drinking water wells to have that tested so families moving in know what, what they are ingesting.
I love it. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
And the drinking water portion of this is brand new, right?
No.
Or, when was that instituted?
I'm sorry?
Oh, I apologize. When was that instituted, the mandatory testing for the water?
2016.
Okay.
Right. So the only thing that we did, it was requested that we add lead, so homes built prior to 1973, that lead be included as well as arsenic.
Okay, thank you.
We have, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second. Second.
A motion in the second. Roll call.
Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Merzinski?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Actually, you had four. Okay, text on the agenda is consider health department fee ordinance. Ms. Amanda?
Thank you. So our originally ordinance for our health department going back for fees started in 1985. Since then, there's been additions to it, and there's multiple ordinances out there. We'd like to repeal those and have it all in one ordinance and also take this opportunity to increase fees. The last time we had a fee increase was 2012. So it's been, it's been a minute. And there's been, yeah, a lot of our fees have, we really haven't increased drastically. We did try to take into account inflation and still looking at the area surrounding counties, what they charge, and also throughout the rest of the state, and we still are well below a lot of them. But we do need to try and cover our costs.
I would entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Merzinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Commissioners, this is an ordinance, so...
Oh, yeah, we need a second reading.
So I don't know if you want to suspend the rules and have a second reading or just put on the next agenda.
Motion to suspend the rules.
This be for both, both ordinances?
Okay, motion to suspend the rules on both ordinances.
I don't know that there's necessarily a rush to get this done before the next meeting, just in case there's anything the public sees, so I will, I will not second that. I'd like to see it on the next agenda.
I will second it. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney?
Nay.
Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
Commissioner Merzinski?
Aye.
Two to one, motion fails.
So then we will have a second vote on...
Fails.
Both ordinances there. I would entertain a motion to, what you want to do.
You need to be, Haney did, it needs to be...
Motion to...
Try to pass it the second time around, I think. Actually, we wouldn't need to make another motion on this. Would it just carry over to the next, to the next meeting anyway?
We just made a motion to read, to suspend the rules and do a second reading.
It has to be unanimous to suspend the rules on the same day.
And that, that's right.
The motion was to suspend the rules. And it has to be a unanimous affirmance of the motion. So I think we have to wait till next meeting.
Sorry, Amanda.
Sorry, Amanda.
And last on our agenda is consider, oh no, we got additions too. Quit claim deed for new county park in Rolling Prairie. Was that the park board meeting last night? Well received by your, by the park board.
Yeah, I think, I think everybody's in agreement. We've, we've had several, you know, members out there visiting that property and, and feel like it could be a really nice park someday. It's, it's going to need some work and going to need some money. But I do, I do think with the development out in, you know, New Carlyle, Rolling Prairie, it makes sense to try to have a nice park out there, especially when it's a property we already own, you know, that the county already owns. And with the water features there and, and things like that, I think this is a, a really good, it'll, it'll be a really good park someday when we, when we're able to, to develop that and hopefully work with some of these development, developers and, and things like that and try to, try to see if they're, they're going to help support and things like that, so.
Well, we've got a little subcommittee set up, I think I mentioned, to meet with South Bend and New Carlyle. It's this Friday. And I'm, I'm going to propose that too. I'm telling them, this is right in your neighborhood here. And see if I can get some financial help from some of the big, heavy pocket people over there. That'll be nice.
Yep.
That'd be nice. Would entertain a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to consider the quit claim deed for the new county park.
Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
Commissioner Merzinski?
Aye.
And Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Three, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Listen to adjourn?
No, hold on, we got the additions here.
Oh, yeah, additional, sorry.
Permission for enterprise fleet management to attend the county council meeting, June was that 24th, I believe?
Motion to approve.
What is the, what is the nature of the permissions? Such as giving them permission to just talk to them or what is, what exactly are we doing here?
I believe they're going to present the same program they presented to us. I believe you were there when that, when they did that about fleet management, leasing vehicles rather than the way we're doing business now, buying them, driving them into the ground, paying a lot of money to keep them on the road and then put them to junk. They have a better system to save the county a lot of money. And they, they need, they've been past us, they need to go now to the council with their proposal, and they want to do that on the 24th. We just need permission for them to attend. Would entertain a motion to that effect.
I made a motion.
So she did make a motion, so this is just for them to present to them? It's not for permission to do anything?
They haven't heard this. They have, they have not done a presentation at the council yet.
Okay.
Yeah, and since the council showed not to attend, I'll look now, we're going to go to them.
All right.
So you second that then?
Yeah, that's fine, second.
All right, we have a motion in the second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
And Commissioner Merzinski?
Aye.
Three, nothing.
Thank you. Permission for assessor and one employee to attend the International Association of Assessing Officials in Denver, August 26th through the 28th, 24th.